Now I'll call the meeting to order. This is the Independent School District number 832 Montomede High Public Schools Regular Board Meeting on Thursday, December 9th at 7 o'clock was wrong, 7:15 PM. First, I'd like to do roll call of attendance.
Done.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julie McGrath, seconded by Kevin Donovan. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Thank you, Julie.
Second.
Kevin, the motion by Julie McGrath, seconded by Kevin Donovan on approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will have a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have organizational matters. We have a new school board member with us tonight who actually started his work last week. But we have the official, well, the swearing in of the school board member tonight. So I'll turn this over to Barb Defferson.
So I have something I'm going to read to you first before you take the oath and should I stay? If I stand, you're not going to hear me here, right? Am I right? If I stay, okay. So you know what I'm going to do? I have to ask you to stand, but I'm going to stay seated for now. Or here, I'll go over there.
Barb likes to make this a lot of fun every time she does it.
I have a new way of doing it. So you need to, you need to write. So you're the one that officially has to stand. Okay. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power put to you and the other members of our school board in the position of both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the Montomede High School District. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive, with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for Montomede High Schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be held accountable to the community. We must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together and with the administration and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of, of office and oath of office for a term beginning Thursday, November 18th, 2021, and expiring the first Monday in January 2023, this is where you come in. Will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me? I, Paul Donna, swear that I will support
I, Paul Donna, swear that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 832 to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
You probably want a picture, don't we? Oh, there, there you are. With all of you.
Okay. I love the way you put these things together.
We'll be over here. Everyone, come on, don't be shy.
Welcome to the board, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have some presentations and recognition. The first one is for the MSBA Leadership Conference. The MSBA is the Minnesota School Boards Association, our professional organization for board members across the state. We have board members being recognized this year at the meeting in January. Tony Pasuni, who is a past board member, is receiving a leadership development certificate. In fact, he's already received that in the mail. But Tony, that's one year in office, did complete all four phases of training in that one year to earn that certificate. Julie McGraw will be recognized at the MSBA meeting for her president's award. Julie has done enough professional development in her time on the board to receive 300 points and points sort of allocate to hours, but not exactly. I'm not quite sure the translation between points and hours. But Julie has done so much professional development with the, the School Board Association. She'll be receiving the president's award. And then finally, we have Kevin Donovan. I am pleased to share that our fellow board member, Kevin Donovan, has been selected to the 2022 MSBA All-State School Board. Kevin, we are very proud and grateful for your work and dedication to Montomede High Public Schools. The All-State School Board Award is Minnesota School Board Association's most prestigious award. The award will be given at MSBA's annual leadership conference on January 13th at the Minneapolis Convention Center. You'll be recognized at the luncheon. We'll have a reserved table. We're hoping Molly can come as well. Since 1971, MSBA's award committee selects up to seven individual board members to the All-State School Board each year. There are roughly 2,300 school board members in Minnesota, and Kevin is one that was selected this year. Board members are nominated by superintendents, fellow board members, parents, or community members for their outstanding contributions to public education. As I said, Kevin is one of seven selected this year for this award. The criteria for the award includes MSBA training, strong leadership, excellence in boardmanship, communication skills, visionary thinking, demonstration of concern for students, staff, and taxpayers, and support for the nomination from stakeholders. Barb will share the highlights from the nomination packet.
Well, I'm just going to share a couple. So I want, I just want to read a little bit of my letter of support that you haven't gotten to see yet, and then also one of our community members that wrote a letter. So I want you to know, among other things, I, I'm happy to recognize you because what I, Kevin Don, Kevin Donovan is a connector. He intrinsically knows the value of authentic relationships, and he builds them naturally with community leaders, students, elected officials, and professional organizations. People trust Kevin. Nothing brings Kevin more joy than connecting with students and marveling at their accomplishments. So that is part of, and part of what I wrote about. You'll get the rest another time. And then I also would like to share from a community member. Jane Sheeweis wrote, "Whatever organization Kevin is a part of, accountability to the community is an absolute. Concerns do not fall on deaf ears. Input is always used to future the good, the good of the organization. It is who he is to be a strong advocate for fairness, understanding, inclusion, and hearing all voices." And there are a lot of other nice things that you get to hear about that people thought in the letter of support. So congratulations, Kevin. We're very excited for this.
Just a word or two?
I gave you a packet there that is your nomination packet, so you can read all the letters from fellow board members, community members, Barb and I, about your, your nomination. So this is a time, if you'd like to share something, I think some of the other board members have a few words to share as well. So if you want to start, that'd be great.
Well, I, I guess, you know, for once, I'm somewhat speechless. But I'm really honored and humbled. And it has been just such a wonderful privilege to serve the school district for the years and the, the community as well. And I just want to thank you all for recognizing and, and doing the work to get this submitted. I appreciate it a lot. So thank you very much.
Well, I wrote a letter for you, Kevin, but I just want to say what an honor it has been to serve with you the last eight years, and it's, you just set a great example for all of us.
I wanted to say thank you for all you've given to our community and to what you've done on the, on the School Board Association because you represented us well there, and I'm glad they're recognizing that. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Stacy.
Kevin, I think Muhammad Ali once said that public service is the rent, the rent that you pay for your place in heaven. So you probably have a pretty good spot one of these days.
Thank you, Paul. Welcome to the board.
All right. Next, we have a community education update from Kate Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Kate Anderson, the community ed director here. And Patrick is going to set up a little presentation for me. There it is. Okay. We, I'm here tonight to give you some updates from, I came last year about the same time, and my update was going, it was obviously a little different than it is going to be this year. So we have some good news to share with you, and I'm excited to do that. Over here, we're going to talk about community ed programs. For those, some of you are new to the board, and so I just want to let you know what are some of the programs that are under community ed. I'm going to talk about some of our summer and fall enhancements that we've had, our annual report, and then upcoming programs this winter and spring. So here is Montomede Community Education. Each color octagon there is a department within community ed. All of those are coordinators with the exception of our adult basic ed. That is something that's under my hat completely, and it is with our consortium with North St. Paul Maplewood, Oakdale, and they oversee most of that. But we do have community members that go over there and attend. So there's lots of different things that we oversee and that we do, things that you may, might not hear a lot of us talk about, but some are very prominent too, that you already know. So last year was a little bleak for us, but we geared right up and we're real excited for summer. And some of these were, some of these pictures are our highlights. You've heard a lot about Food Truck Friday. We have the MAC kids at the beach. Our T-ball came back, and then we were still able to hold our Missoula Theater Performance in August. So I did a little comparison document just to show you, you know, what last year was like and how we did some rebounding this year. Our MAC program, one of the big things was that we were unable to hold our senior MAC program, which is our sixth, fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. And this year we did, and we had, went kind of right back to where we were before with 27 students. So our T-ball, we actually doubled in size. Those little ones were really ready to get back and get involved. Our music program has been growing, and we saw a little bit of that, obviously, this summer. We doubled in our lessons from one year to the, to the next. And that was, some of our instructors were a little leery that first summer to, to hold some in-person lessons there. A big one was our adult groups. We were unable to have people in the building in summer of 2020. But this last year, the minute we were kind of given the, okay, the green light, we had all kinds of people knocking down the doors to get back in, and those are some of our adult clubs that we offer there. And then again, that Missoula Theater, that's a big thing that we hold in August. We, we still did it in 2020. Lot, a lot of protocols in place, and this year we were able to bring it back. Still some protocols, but maybe not as many. So that was, that was fun. Some of the highlights of the summer, you'll see on the bottom there, the picture of the Food Truck Friday. That was in May. We had, we were lucky enough to have the high school pep band come out, and that was a, a big thing for them because they hadn't played all the school year. So some of the other highlights, we had a self-defense seminar that was up on the top left picture there about safety, and especially for those students that were going off maybe to college or to work adventures and things like that. Food Truck Friday, we partnered with a swimming group this last summer to do their registration and do some promoting for them. They did, obviously, we don't have a pool here, so they had done the reservation, but we did all the registration here. Cooking with chemistry was one of our classes. We got a really nice note from a parent that said her child was not excited that her mother signed her up for something. But the mom wanted us to know that her daughter came walking out with the biggest smile on her face, and she was just so excited and just was talking, talking, talking the whole way home. So youth volleyball came back strong, and then we had Las Chiquitos is a early childhood Spanish program that we brought in this summer. That was a big hit. This past summer, Community Ed, as well as our administrative team, did a lot of discussions about things that were maybe lacking in the school year during that first year of COVID. And we really wanted to, Community Ed really wanted to be supportive of what was happening in the schools. And, you know, we took a look at the district strategic plan, and we really wanted to enhance our middle school programs for students. So these are just some of the examples of what we have started. We started a middle school wrestling team. That has been a hit. That Lego League Robotics, they had their tournament the first weekend in December, and they did very well. We didn't move on to the next level, but it was a great experience. They had a wonderful parent volunteer, and Stacy Stout did quite a bit of volunteering for that too. So thank you, Stacy. But we now have Alice Soifert, their communications, is leading the Zephyr Cooking and Zephyr Influencers that just started. The cooking class had over 30 students enrolled. So kids are wanting to do different things, and you can see some of our art things that were happening too with some good enrollment. Every year I have to submit an annual report. It's due the beginning of November. And you report on the number of users that use Community Ed and the hours that our facilities are being used. So this year we reported 700 or 7,000, excuse me, 158 hours of use in our facilities. It is up, obviously, from facility use, but is down from our pre-COVID numbers. And then the number of people that we served, you'll see there, and it is a decrease in the number of people from last year, and that's probably because what we attributed that to is the first three months of this 2020, we still had robust programs going on until we were shut down. So, but again, we're still significantly lower than pre-COVID. But I think as the year progresses this year, those numbers will definitely be going up. Some upcoming programs I want to tell you about is, we just submitted to the printer today, our Early Childhood brochure for next year. And this Friday, or well, it's tomorrow already, we'll be submitting our winter and spring brochure. It will go live on Monday. Cross your fingers that goes well. And you'll see all these new programmings. We're going to bring back those day trips. We're going to the Chan House and Theater, the Wabashaw Caves. We have a creating writing class for middle school and high school. We're partnering with the White Bear Center of the Arts. We have a Spanish class that's coming out for K-5 students. And then we really wanted to bring in some, not your traditional weightlifting type of classes at the middle school. So we brought back, or in implementing a new adult and middle school, they're separate, yoga, stretch and strength and stretch, excuse me. And then this was a big thing we heard about from the high school. Erin Forsyth was really talking to us about bringing in some boys volleyball. So we're going to be starting that for middle school and high school students. And then some of our adults, active adults, have brought to our attention, they wanted to learn some American Mahjong. So all of those are some new things that you're going to see coming out here this winter and spring. And I appreciate your time tonight, learning about all the community ed. If you have any questions, I'd love to hear them.
Julie? Okay, so I didn't see your pickleball numbers.
Our pickleball is strong. We did just recently in September go to an online registration. So that was a little tricky at first because they were used to just paper and penciling it in and that kind of stuff. But we're still going strong.
I figured. I thought that would bring your numbers up.
If we could get another court, it would be another, you know, fence thing. We, it would be, we'd be able to have two going at the same time.
Yeah. Pull all the time with them.
Yes, it's very rare. If you want to come at 7:00 AM, I think that's really, really the only slap that's full, or that's open, excuse me.
Stacy?
I just want to really congratulate you on the great programming that you've brought. I know you, you started with our district right as COVID hit us. So I just am so thankful for the effort you and your team have put into bringing in enrichment activities. I'm obviously more focused on the middle school because that's where my kids are. And I think, given the year, the almost going on two years that we've all been through, I think having those opportunities has been really, really important. So I just want to say thank you and congratulate you and your team on a really good job.
Very kind. Thank you. I'm very lucky that I have staff that are willing to step out of the box and really try different things and research things. And so I'm very grateful for that. Thank you, Stacy.
Go ahead, Julie. So when was your, when was your holiday meal, or is it coming up?
Coming up. Next Wednesday, we will have our community lunch. Yep, we're bringing back our winter community lunch. It's going to start, I think, at 11:45 on Wednesday. We will have some music by Jeffrey, our piano, one of our piano instructors, and we're catering in Roma.
And is it full or is there still spaces?
It is not full. We have, we have probably four or five spots. We're keeping the numbers a little bit lower because of all the protocols that we want to have in place and stuff. So there's probably about four or five spots left. We'd love for anybody to join us.
So how do we join? Because I really miss those things.
If you want to come, Mr. Donovan, I'd be happy to sign you up for that.
All right. I think you might have my credit card on file.
I think we're good. We'll figure it out. Yes.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Next, we have our student representative report. Tu.
All right, so let's start with Wild, Wildwood Elementary. Second grade classes right now are trying to highlight kindness for individuals, communities, and families. They're writing cards in classes for nursing homes or decorating paper lunch bags for food packing. Some students are making videos and saying some kind words to staff members. I've got to see this in the showers classroom where I see their little cards and their bags, and I think they're having a lot of fun with it. Um, the Bengston Bunch in second grade wrote to a service officer or veteran, Patriotic Kenny, who is a popular veteran and influencer in our area. They, Mr. Again, in second grade, in the showers class and Mrs. Anderson's class, students are learning how to self-regulate with fidgets. I've had the opportunity to see this in action again as I work with Ms. showers classroom. And they are learning how to use these fidgets to calm down and focus the classroom environment. They're also learning the difference between tools and toys, where the fidgets might look like toys, but they're actually really useful for some focusing and just going back into the classroom setting. So it's just helping them out, kind of calm down a little bit, and it's really useful and really fun for them to use. So at OH Anderson, there are four fourth grade girls who are organizing OHA Helping Hands. Essentially, they're collecting donations for both the Good Neighbors Club and St. Andrews Community Resource. I asked the principal there to kind of ask them a few questions. And this was like their mission statement almost. Helping hands is helping those who need it most. December is a very cold month in Minnesota, and we want to help others stay warm and healthy. They have given others ways to make and raise money for others, and they have created you know, announcements for their students that they can collect all these donations. Their goal is to encourage others to volunteer, and hopefully that someone they help will want to volunteer as well. So at the Montomede Middle School, you kind of talked about it with the presentation, but there are so many new extracurriculars out there for the students. For example, Cooking Club, Influencer Club, again, you kind of saw that on the presentation. There's also an ongoing monthly STEM challenge, which my little sister, the secretary, is like super excited about and always telling me, I want to do this and I want to do that. The middle school is also developing a collaboration between the high school and the middle school with STEM. There is a STEM club at the high school currently, and they want to replicate that at the middle school as well with some high school leaders and facilitators kind of to get that leadership from the high schoolers, but also that collaboration and like, oh, look at these people that I aspire to be or look at these people who are doing things that I want to do when I get to high school. And finally, at the high school, SLC is working with Jackson Elementary again. This is an annual thing where we get to deliver toys and holiday gifts and necessities that these students at Jackson need. We are working to get these holiday gifts sometime next week. Kind of depends on the snow tomorrow if that cancels our plans. But we are working really hard to get those there, except Ms. Roma and Mr. Brongrin, Ms. Roma is an art teacher, and Mr. Brongrin is a science physics teacher. They are working to start a STEAM club at Montomede. Essentially, this is a collaboration between art and engineering. They hope that the art students will be able to investigate more on how to expand their art while the engineering students will be able to figure out more creative ways to solve their problems. So this collaboration between the two departments is exciting, and I've got to talk to Ms. Roma, and she seems like really excited about where they can take this club forward. Finally, flex time is still a great opportunities for students to kind of relax and then also get a lot of work done. Teachers are providing spaces for learning and support during this time, whether it be homework study, homework going over, test reviews. I've used the opportunities to like go over tests, ask teacher questions. But then also there are a lot of clubs that take this time to meet and organize, for example, maps, newspapers, just some of the things that I'm involved in. We use this opportunity to kind of regroup, figure out what's, what's going next, and, you know, use the time to study up.
Sounds like you had a theme to your report.
Yeah, yeah. So what was the theme here?
I definitely wanted to focus more on the experiences that our students are having. Updates are important, don't get me wrong, but it's not what the voice of the students are. Those are usually what the principal is saying is happening to the parents. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm explaining to you guys what's happening at our schools. What are the students doing to grow? What are the students, like, what are the resources that they're using? And then even possibly, what are the resources that they might need? It's the kind of theme for this.
Yeah, I could hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our next report is from the superintendent.
Hey. And so we have two slides. Okay, so so for my superintendent's report, once again, I'll be talking about things around the district. I'll give you an update on the secondary schedule redesign. Oh, you need me to, you need this? Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, give you an update on the secondary schedule redesign process that we've talked about, and then do my regular COVID-19 data update. So first of all, around the district, we have five Montomede High School students who are selected for the American Coral Directors State, All-State Honor Choir. You may know, it's, I think it are, we weren't together since, since this happened, but our Montomede Football Team did finish second. Came second in the finals of the Class 5A State High School League State Football Championship. And, and I know it was a heartbreaker, but I also want to say that they did an amazing job, and just the fact that they got as far as they did was kind of outstanding. So that's how I saw it, at least, and I was very impressed with, with all that they did this season. So the middle school, I, I do, you've heard about the Zephyr Influencers Club, so this is about student communicators. And so they held their first meeting, and it's led by Alice Soifert, who's over there. And she is working on helping them determine what stories they should be shared about the middle school. So that's the club that you've heard about, the Zephyr Influencers. We did have seventh grade students in the Technology Intern Program tour the district technology office and met with the technology department staff. And they just got to discuss devices, device repair, and network security and support. So thanks to our technology team for giving our, our technology interns a little, a little glimpse into what's happening in the back there. And then our, the high school engineering three class toured Westfall Technical Facility. That, and I believe that is what we used to know as mold craft. Am I right about that? I see some nod, so I think that's the case. Opportunity for students to see manufacturing tool making career paths. And so it, it's wonderful that our, our students are having these opportunities. In many ways, those last three that I've talked about are career opportunities for our students to see what it's like to, to do some a little career exploration. I will also say around the district, I had a few of you come with me to visit some schools. Most recently, Paul Donna was able to visit a number of schools with me. um, was able to visit a number of schools with me, um, and also Lucy Payne this week as well. So I don't know, did you want to comment on anything that you saw? I'm putting you on the spot right now. I guess I'll just say that they joined me as well to get to see what was happening in schools. Secondary schedule redesign. Um, we, so we've had a couple of meetings recently. The first we, when we, in November, we heard from our secondary students and I'm sorry, let me back up just to uh remind you what this is. When I say secondary schedule redesign, we have middle school and high school, a design team working on looking at our middle school and high school schedules. They were identified as um barriers to be able to do a number of the things that we want to be able to do around student choice and opportunities and building connections and um teacher collaboration. And so our um our design team is meeting to work on, on those schedules. And so first started by hearing about this from secondary students about their school experiences. So they could give some insight into their experience with the schedule. And they clearly highlighted a strong desire for self-directed experiences like Zephyr Time and Flex Time. Those came through loud and clear and you keep hearing about that here at the board table as well. Uh, on this December meeting, uh, it was a lot of looking through relevant state statutes, district policies, current practices to really build that foundation for what are those that, what is that foundational knowledge we need before we start redesigning? So what are our things that we really need to know? What are some constraints? What are some things that, that are going to guide that uh secondary redesign? So next, in January and February, our design team will meet and start creating schedules. And then at the end of February, if you recall, then it goes back um out to families to be able to comment and give feedback on those designs. And it goes back to the design team for revision based on that feedback. And then it comes back again to families, um stakeholders, students, teachers, to be able to give feedback. And then it goes back again. So there are two opportunities for stakeholders to give feedback on the design teamwork and before, before a final comes to you in the spring. So anyone have any questions about that process? We've gone over it a couple times, but um, okay, so once, this is my, just my regular update around COVID numbers and what's been happening. So I, I tried to give you, one of the things we talk a lot about is, is using county numbers versus building and, and school level numbers. And I just wanted to show you, I've talked about this before, but I thought I, we could show you in this graph form how connected the two are. So up above, you see that is the seven day moving average for Washington County pulled off the CDC website. And it's a, just about lined up with um the graph down below. What we see is that when county numbers rise, we see some, something similar happen in our um school district. That last one, that yellow bar is just for, through Thursday. Um, and so there may be some additional, we'll have a, this will be updated on the website on Friday as it always is, but I just wanted you to be able to see that. And it is, again, when we see levels high in the, in the community, we see it happen in our schools and it does affect staff and student absences. So again, our mitigation layers serve as our best effort to reduce those absences and keep our school case numbers low and keep our students learning in person, which is our goal. I had a question from one of the board members about the number of um COVID notifications that have been coming home recently. I just want to remind everyone that this is our best way to be really transparent about what's going on in our school. Um, so we continue to notify families when there's a positive case exposure within the classroom or on the bus. Secondary students have seen a lot more of these recently because they have multiple classes and our cases rose quite a bit just recently. And so it's not surprising that if you got multiple notifications that I just want you to understand that that's the reason why, because we really did have a big uptake uptick in our um cases and because secondary students in particular have so many, have so many classes that they go to. Um, and so what we've talked about is that when we start reducing mitigation, then we would talk more about giving information about close contacts. And I, I mentioned to you another time that we've, we've posted to have a close contact tracer so that when we do um reduce mitigation, then there's some more specific information that you would go get. At this time, if it's in the classroom, um, a family gets a notification for um exposure. Dashboard is updated weekly on, at the end of the day on Fridays, and it does include positive COVID staff and student numbers and vaccination rates by building. Um, I talked to you a little bit about this as well, but we do, but in talking with one of you, um, thought it might be good for everyone to understand what it is we do during quarantine in terms of the instructional plan. And so um so I do have some details here about how each school building established communication letters so that there's there's consistent communication from building to building. And we do know, so at the secondary level, we know that the academic requirements at the secondary level are higher. And so in order to support students, we do have I, I think she's named herself quarantine, quarantine support. Well, it's quarantine support coordinator, maybe? She has her name for it. And we have a video where um of, of Annie Doll explaining what this looks like at the secondary level. So we're going to show that right now.
Hi, I'm Annie Doll and I am a high school Spanish and yearbook teacher. Additionally, this year I've taken on the role as what I call COVID coach, which means that I help students and families at the secondary level in the event um that they are on quarantine. Um, depending on numbers, it is either me that does this or there is an additional staff person that does it um if the numbers um make that necessary. Okay, this is kind of how the process works um in order to provide support for the secondary students that are in quarantine. Um, I, from the nurse, the school nurses, um, I get a notification that a student has been placed on quarantine and am provided with the date that they will be back in school. Then um I fill out a, just a little report with some key information so that I know what classes the students have and what teachers they have and kind of uh a picture of how they are doing um in each of those classes um at the beginning of the quarantine. Then um I make contact with the family. Um, and some of my first questions are um, how is your student feeling? And um, do they need any materials from the school? Um, depending on what classes they have and um how, how they work their day, the, the answer to that question varies. Um, a lot of students need materials out of their lockers or um notebooks from their teachers that are housed in those classrooms, or they leave their Chromebook charger at school. Um, so I gather those materials and make them available for pickup. Um, a lot of families don't have printers at home, so if they need um physical copies of the assignments, I print those and make them available for the family as well. Um, a lot of times I speak to the teachers or to the counselors um about how to best support the, how to best support the student. Um, I help students with um executive functioning and maybe helping them prioritize their workload um so that it is not quite so overwhelming. And then as they um come back to school, I check in with them and then kind of pass the baton, if you will, to their teachers and to um their guidance counselors. Um, and that is kind of um what the support that I provide or um if numbers necessitate. Um, uh, another colleague of mine provides um for support during quarantine. Um, thank you for letting me tell you about that.
Um, and these are our vaccination rates. You can see we're climbing at the elementary. Now that elementary is, is able um and our five and up are able to get the vaccine. So we are climbing there. Those are our vaccination rates. Um, so I, I've also had some questions about classroom quarantines. And I, I think actually people have asked me, they were worried that, you know, what does it mean if we're going to go to distance learning or that um kind of situation? So I just thought it might be worthwhile to just reiterate that our plan is, our goal is to keep students safe and learning in person. So that's from the beginning, that's always been our goal. Um, it is the case that when we have multiple, so at the elementary level or, or actually this has happened at the secondary as well. If we have multiple cases in a classroom, we do consult with the teacher, the principal, the school nurse and, and also Washington County Public Health when numbers warranted to determine the best course of action. So for example, it may be that we would need to um quarantine a classroom. We have not had to do that yet. We have sent tests home to any parent that wants to test and we have recommended that that they do that. And so then parents will call in and we'll send tests home. So those are the kinds of things we've done. Um, and, and so we really do it on a case by case basis. It's sometimes the case that we can, it may very well be that there may be multiple cases in the classroom, but it could have been an exposure outside the classroom and they happen to be together in this classroom. So we watch for, for spread within school. Um, and we monitor that, but, but we have not gotten to a point where we've had to quarantine a class or, or a team or a school or a grade level. You might recall last year, we did hit that point um at different times, but we have not yet this year. So um, and, and so the important part to know about this in a typical year we face, and we've talked a little bit about this already, we face staffing shortages or stressors where where we have um difficulty covering all the classes. And so with COVID, we have additional stressors, you know, because we'll have students or staff out for ten days or in quarantine. So our goal again is to just continue our layered mitigation so that we can minimize that impact. But um, and I know in some districts, it, you, because, because we saw it in the news, some districts did need to use distance learning as, uh, because of staffing shortages. We have not hit that at this point. We have had challenges. We definitely have had days where our district office staff has been in the classrooms and subbing, but we just haven't hit that point where um we need to go into a distance learning situation. So I wanted to just reiterate that. Did you have a question?
I, just a quick question. So if you did have to quarantine a class, is there a thought of, well, if they're all sick, then no one's going to be doing work while they're out. But if they're just quarantining because the numbers were getting too high, would there be an online option for that?
Right, that would be the idea. So then when, in switching to a distance learning, then there would be that interaction with, you know, with the staff members, similar to what we did last year when, for example, we did have to quarantine um a seventh grade, we, well, we had to do it with elementary on a number of occasions last year. And then we had a seventh grade uh team that we had to quarantine as well. Um, there may be a transition date in order to get that all ready and, and up and running, but otherwise that would be the idea if we had to quarantine everyone. But in the meantime, each building does have a plan to support students when they're out. Um, at the elementary, it's a little different because it's, you know, confined to a classroom, but that's why at the secondary, we have the COVID coach. Yeah. So any other questions about that? Yeah.
What, is there a threshold? Is there a number that we've got in mind?
You know, um, there are districts that would say three to five. And again, what we talk about is looking at it a case by case because it's different when there's a number of students who are positive because of an outside exposure compared to something that's happened within the building or within the classroom. So I'll say that that's a time when we're really paying attention and we're sending notes home to parents to say, you know, to let them know. So we had, we have had a classroom where we did send a number of notes home to the family just to let them know um and offer to send home test kits as well. So um, so there's not exactly a number, but I'll say that that's, that's when we really start sending more notifications home to families to make sure they know. Any other, oh, any other questions?
I'm sure I just have one, one other question. I, I um, I heard today that one of our neighboring school districts have stopped contract, uh, contact tracing. Much of a burden on staff. And just, I, I think it was just a benefit um analysis that they did. Any, have you heard that? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I will say that that would not be something the public health would support. I, I can tell you that it is very um labor intensive to contact trace, which is why we can't ask that of our nurses who are already doing a full-time job to do contact tracing additionally. Um, but I can't really comment on what other districts have done, but I, I would, I mean, that is the reason we are posting for a contact tracing. Somebody to, to help with that.
Mm-hmm, sure. Okay, so that's what I was hearing you say is we don't have a contract to contact tracer yet.
That's right. So um, and if you recall with uh universal masking, we don't need to quarantine uh students if they're all masked, if there's a close contact within school. We also don't need to quarantine if the student is vaccinated or has tested positive in the last ninety days. So there are some ways that, but to know that requires contact tracing. And so um again, as we remove mitigation, we would want to, to know that. We would want to be able to do some contact tracing. We just can't do that at this point, but we're working on it.
And does the person you're hiring for that need to be a, an RN?
Doesn't that need to be? But that would be, our preference would be that um, I'm, so I'm looking to our HR director in the back and, and so we are, we did post the position to be a nurse. Am I correct? Because that's our preference. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Oh, sorry. It is um, the position, we prefer it to be um a nurse, however, it's not required due to the, due to the nature of the job. It's just that it would be more flexible for us to support our nursing staff if it's somebody who is also licensed, so. Other questions? Okay, thank you. That was it.
Next, we have discussion information items, starting with the board calendar, which is included in your packet. Kate Anderson did share the community lunch piece with us. Um, which is not on here, but um add that to your calendar. You'll also see on Wednesday, December fifteenth, there is another PTO meeting. And we currently don't have someone doing PTO. I'm wondering if there's a board member who can cover PTO in December. It is Wednesday, December fifteenth at nine thirty AM. Okay, that'd be great, Stacy. Thank you so much. Um, the other thing I want to call that we already mentioned is the MSBA Leadership Conference is Thursday, January thirteenth. There will be that recognition luncheon where Kevin will be honored for his award to all-state school board. You, other board members have things to call out. Okay. Next, uh, discussion item is an MSBA IDA resolution, which was put in your packet and Barb sent it out to us um last week. This came up at the delegate assembly. This is a resolution that um our professional organization is asking us to bring to our boards for um discussion and hopefully adoption, so they can use it in their advocacy work at the federal level. Um, and so you've had access to it. Thank you, Jeff, for filling in the numbers we needed of the impact to our district in the cross subsidy issue. We have been discussing the cross subsidy for many, many years. Um, and so I did put it on as a discussion item. As usually, we discuss something first and we come back to it the next month before we have action. However, I feel as we've discussed this for many, many years, um, this could be moved to an action item if the full board wanted that um to happen. We could adopt it this evening. So questions? Comments?
I think it's something we should take up tonight. I was a junior in high school when this law wasn't enacted. It's never been fully funded. It's something that we've lobbied for for years. And, and it was, actually, it was the one that I would carry to Washington DC each year when I was with the MSBA. And I'm talking about, you made a promise, but you haven't fulfilled the promise. I think this one, uh, we owe this to the kids and I know they're looking for support to bring this forward. I mean, if they're not going to fully fund it, why do they have it, I guess? So I think we should take it up tonight. Why do they have it, I guess. So I think we should take it up tonight.
Kevin, are you making a motion?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Second, any more discussion on the resolution in your packet? Any other conversation? As I said, we have discussed this many times and the impact to our school budgets. All those in favor of adopting the resolution on IDEA, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, Barb, will you send that to MSBA? Or do you want me to?
We can.
Okay, you got that? Thank you. So now we have our other action items, um, starting with truth and taxation presentation. Jeff is here to give that presentation.
All right. Good evening. Um, tonight we're asking the board. Improve the uh, the final levy certification for taxes payable twenty-two. And um, and so the levy for the pay twenty-two levy will fund, provides funds for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. If you recall back in September, you approved a preliminary levy. That was, that was just, that was a maximum levy based on um, all voter approved levies previously authorized. Included all the discretionary levies uh, within the certification. And um, so that was a maximum levy. What you have to do tonight when we get to the final is approve a specific dollar amount. And you see on the calendar there by the twenty-eighth, we need to get the uh, final levy certified to the home county auditor. To um, Department of Education. And we certify to the um, Department of Revenue that we've complied with the uh, truth and taxation components. So as you know, uh, school district levies are, there's two types. They're either voter approved and examples are, are operating referendum, are uh, capital projects levy. Um, any bonded debt from voter approved uh, debt levies or construction building levies. And then we have uh, what's called discretionary levies. And um, so you can see examples, long-term facilities, operating capital, uh, building lease. I think, you know. Um, it says discretionary, but for, for board purpose, approving the, approving the levy, it's voter approved. The discretionary, I think we've got that uh, stated there. These levies are approved by state legislature with expenditure limits. So there's not a whole lot of discretion, I guess. Not a lot of discretion there. Um, but, but uh, and again, those are approved by the state legislature with spending limits. We levy in uh, three of our four governmental funds. You can see the general fund. Uh, levy is the largest share at about sixty-six point three six percent. So within the general fund, that's where we are including the operating referendum, capital projects levy. And most of the discretionary levies reside within the general fund. The uh, the debt service fund provides funds for um, annual principal and interest payments on voter approved debt. So the total amount that, this is a dollar, we're going to ask you to certify is that sixteen million dollars at the bottom of that page there. Um, can I put that in, in context with our total annual budget in the district? You can look at that uh, third column. So now we're listing. Um, all of our different funds, which you can see our total revenue. Total revenue is uh, fifty-nine million, one thirty-five. And our, and current year levy is about fifteen million. So we're not totally dependent on property tax revenue. Um, it provides about twenty-five percent of, of the district's total revenue. Uh, things to know about the, about the pay twenty-two. Um, as we read that first bullet there as a reminder, there are three tiers with our operating levy. And this pay twenty-two certification includes the tier two increase or two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, per student additional authority. Um, that provides about a million dollars in new revenue in our levy. Take a look at from our prior year to this year, paid twenty-one to paid twenty-two, that is essentially the increase in the paid twenty-two levy. Uh, it also includes pay twenty-two, uh, includes the, I shouldn't say preliminary, I should say final certification. Includes the uh, capital projects levy and that was approved uh, successfully renewed on November second. With that, again, you did a maximum levy. Um, in September. And now we would like you to move to the final approval. Again, these are dollars for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, and we recommend the approval in that, I'll mention that specific dollar amount. Sixteen million, oh ninety-six, three, three, one and sixteen cents. Questions?
Questions. You do a very good job of presenting and sharing all the information. Go ahead, Julie. I, I was just going to say, we've, we've heard this presentation since July probably, so. We've heard it many times.
Some of the budget information.
Many times.
Fun fact.
So, so there are not a lot of questions because we've had a lot of discussions about this.
Sure. I have a question of, and forgive me, uh, the movie on the board here, but uh, Jeff, could you, now, could you just put this, the levy?
From prior year. Um, so and in the next presentation, we'll talk about that a little bit, the additional revenue. Um, the levy is up about six point two percent. Um, just under a million dollars and that direct, it just directly ties back to that. In that two hundred and seventy-five dollar increase in the operating referendum. So if we take, we took that piece out, the levy is actually pretty flat from the prior year. So the increase is pretty much all attributable to um, to that tiered increase in the operating referendum.
I, that's an important note, that it's essentially a flat.
Yeah, and, and obviously the capital projects is in there, but, but that was in there in the prior year. So, yeah.
Say that last thing one more time. Sorry, the last thing you just said.
Pardon? Just what was the last, just restate the capital project.
Oh, just that, um, so I made that as a point that that's in the levy. And we were talking about increases from the prior year. So just that, I mean, I think you all know, but the capital projects was there in that prior year.
So I just have one more comment. So if we make a motion to approve it, could you put the amount back up there? Because I think we have to say it, don't we? I believe so, but we have the, the hearing first, the public comment, if anyone has comments, right? Before we make the motion. So first we have to have the public comment, so we'll come back to that. So this is an opportunity for the public, if they want to come speak to the truth and taxation piece. Last call for public comment. All right. So now, um, if we could have the number again, or does someone have it in front of them? Patrick's got it going for us.
Sixteen million, oh ninety-six, three, three, one.
I make a motion to approve the amount of sixteen million ninety-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents for levy?
Second.
Eight twenty-two? By Julie, second by Kevin. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the levies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Don't go too far, Jeff. You have three more items here. Approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three financial timeline.
Yeah. It's coming. Okay, so now that we had, you recall, we had the uh, approval of the audit back in um, in October. And then of course you did the preliminary levy. Now you've certified the, the final levy. So we, although we've been working on the twenty-two, twenty-three. Budget for a while as part of our finance projection model, but now we really start to um, start to dig into the budget for the following. Uh, the following school year. So. Um, you know, one of the first things we do is start to look at, okay, what's the funding? What's funding going to look like? And um, we know from the legislature last year, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three biennium. Um, they've done a basic formula increase of two point four or five percent and two percent. So this year going into the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, we know what this basic funding formula will be. And I think um, that provides about um, it's more that's about fifty-four percent of our. Of our total revenue. So if I use the simple formula, we know our uh, pupil units. We apply that to the formula. So I'm looking at the um, twenty-two, twenty-three amount. So that's that two percent increase. Um, that'll generate five hundred and thirty-eight thousand additional rev- revenue as we start working next year's budget. So that we know, um, here's the. Here is the uh, second tier increase in the operating referendum. So here I'm using the same, we look at payable twenty-one, paid twenty-two. Uh, certified levy is three point six in the current year, and there's the million dollar increase that we're talking about. Um, with the levy, everybody see that? So the authorized levy voter approved, this is the operating referendum. Uh, next year, when we really dig into the budget, um, we'll be using that four point six, so about a million dollars more. And then, because of the uh, successful bone in, uh, bone in November. We uh, build in the, the uh, tech levy dollars. So current year is seven hundred and forty-two thousand. Next year we'll build into the budget and seven hundred and seventy-five. Okay, so those are, I would say the significant budget trends we're looking at. And then um. We also still have some additional federal funds. We'll have the SRT three, American Rescue, uh, the regular SRT three. Six hundred and ten thousand dollars that we plan to use in um, in next year's budget. So. We talk about how those funds can be used to support um, student learning recovery for the SRT three. And then COVID related, and that's contact tracing, transportation, PPE, um, any number of things. And I, I think it's important to know that these federal dollars are one time. So this will probably be the end of our, unless there's another allocation. Um, this will be the end of our federal, current federal dollars that we have. And then as we can go through the timeline, you've done the uh, preliminary levy. We've had the annual audit report. It skipped to, tonight we did the truth and taxation final levy. So in January, we'll bring uh, budget assumptions, projection model for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. We really get into, I'd say really get into the budget in February, March kind of timeframe when we're looking at. At staffing, enrollment and staffing. Um, and that's what the leadership team, our department, um, that's where I think it. We really get at it because staffing is about eighty-two percent of our. Of our total budget. We move to uh, in May, budget adoption. So the board has to approve budget by June thirty. Uh, before the start of the next fiscal year, but we plan to uh, present this to the board in May. And um, I just wanted to mention, so. You know, we build these budgets, we have a number of assumptions. And we like to keep the board apprised and we want to validate those assumptions. And so one of the reports that you've seen uh, several times is this quarterly report. And this just alerts us and the board uh, to any kind of budget variations that uh, that may exist. So again, we're not seeing anything for this year. Uh, we went through last year, kind of same thing. But uh, but we use this to, to really validate those assumption, budget assumptions. So. Uh, I think that's your. September one, and obviously in January, we'll bring the second quarter, then December, uh, December reports. I think that's it. Questions on timeline?
Uh, you talked about some of the SRT funds and the federal dollars coming in, that this will be, yeah, now historically we've been, what do we get from the federal in a given year, about two percent of our budget?
Um. Yeah, about eight, nine hundred thousand. So what we've had now in the last few years is maybe an additional, that's going to be six hundred and ten next year. Um, and I think maybe, maybe that same level this year, last year a little bit more. So. But um, so, so when we're just getting normal federal funds, it's the special education. And the title programs, and yeah, that's about two percent of the whole.
So one other thing that um, I've been, uh, just got a notice today on is. The uh, unemployment insurance. Uh, is lower. We usually have a, a good chunk of money in there in reserves and of course through COVID, that was drawn down. And so we're one point three billion dollars in the hole as a state on the unemployment insurance. And so there is a. A thought right now that uh, employers are going to have to pay a bigger percentage of unemployment insurance back to recharge that. Have you, are you kind of thinking about that at all and?
Uh, I, I haven't heard that, um, but I did see where the states projecting uh, quite a surplus. So. Um, yeah, well, we'll have to take that into account. The, you know, as, as far as our budget planning. Um, we can levy for, uh, we can levy for unemployment costs. So, not that we want to just pass that on to taxpayers, but, but that. Wouldn't have a real significant impact to the district budget. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion? No. Kevin, you get first. I'll take second. Moved by Kevin, second by Julie. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Jeff, you're still up there. This is approval of the revised LTFM tenure plan, OH Anderson project.
Yeah. Um, so, so the resolution attached to this is to revise the district's LP, their ten-year LTFM plan. And you know, MDE calls it a ten-year long-term uh, facilities management program, or LTFM dollars. But um, so boards approve a ten-year plan every July. Um, so we actually do it annually. And so with this project, this wasn't contemplated when we, when the board approved the LTFM this year. This would be additional work and um, would require then the board to amend, give us authority to amend our LTFM plan. So. Project we're looking at, I know we've taken this to uh, facilities committee a couple of times. We had a work session, learning session with the board a week or so ago, and I'm going to have Matt uh, Helgerson from Site Logic. And talk about the scope of the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Madam Chair, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to start by. Uh, congratulating Paul on your election to the board. Congratulations. And Kevin, uh, I would echo what's been said about you. I, I've gotten the chance to get to know you over the years. In my former life as superintendent and uh, can attest to what's been said about you and. Uh, this, so everybody knows, not only does Kevin impact the community of Mata Meda and the school district of Mata Meda. He assists school districts around the state. And I was, had the good fortune of working with him to help establish a foundation in the district that I serve. So. And I was, had the good fortune of working with him to help establish a foundation in the district that I serve. So. Thank you, Kevin, and well-deserved honor for you.
Thank you.
If I get the privilege to uh, share a little bit about the project, and I'm going to recap. As, as Jeff mentioned, we went into greater detail. When we did our study sessions with the full board. Uh, but uh, this is intended to be a full recap for you, uh, and I'll go through that. Might need some assistance in how to. Plug it forward here. Use the mouse, okay? Perfect, okay. So getting into the scope of work that's proposed. Uh, specific at O H Anderson Elementary, there's an O H Anderson scope, and then there's a scope at some more district-wide, and we'll get into that in a second. And you can see these are the high points. With this project, we'd be converting the, the current steam system to hot water. And that would include a, a high efficiency hot water boiler system. We'll install chilled water. Uh, a central chilled water system. Replace the air handling units and include dehumidification. The building currently does not have that dehumidification said differently. Air conditioning, but the M D E likes to see the word dehumidification. Replace ductwork with a very uh, variable air volume system. We'll upgrade the energy management system and remove the pneumatic controls. What this will do, it'll give the staff. A greater ability to control the temperature and the comfort of the building. It'll provide for a better learning environment for the students. And a better teaching environment for the staff. It upgrades your electrical service. And again, that's necessary to handle some of these new components. That will also assist uh, your device program and being able to manage that. A device uh, program in the, in the school as well. Due to the fact that we're going to be up in the ceilings, it makes sense to uh, work and. Uh, replace the ceiling system. You, you did see in the pictures that we showed, there were some bowing to that ceiling. That's due to the humidity levels, again, related back to that, a lack of dehumidification, so. Uh, replacing that ceiling grid will. Will, um, will occur as well. Ionization was factored in and would be uh, added to the air handling units. That, of course, is a pathogen mitigation solution. That uh, in addition to the outside air, bringing fresh air in, it helps uh, reduce the spread of different viruses and bacteria. Including but not limited to COVID nineteen. And it does also, this project would abate the asbestos. So the pipe joints do have asbestos. In them, they're undisturbed, so they're not harmful, but uh, it does abate those, so you would be rid of that particular. Uh, health and safety hazard. Moving on to the district-wide, one of the in- inputs. Uh, the feedback that we received during that study session was. Are there some things that we can do district-wide to help reduce these? Uh, the pathogens that uh, you know, especially with the COVID nineteen and the endemic uh, that we're experiencing right now. Um, with the different variants. So ionization uh, is a relatively inexpensive solution that can be added in, as discussed. So we've included that in the scope of work. So that would be added to the air handling units at all of the other buildings, including a district education center, high school, middle school, and Wildwood. As we look at that scope of work, um, I want to just call out a couple of different buckets. L T F M stands for, as Jeff previously talked about, long-term facility maintenance dollars. There's two different buckets here that we're talking about. Large project indoor air quality. Is additional levy authority that the boards across the state through legislation have. Uh, in order to make sure that the environment is safe for students and staff. So this is additional levy authority. It does not impact your regular uh, revenue as it relates to L T F M. So there is a number of components that I previously mentioned. That are eligible within that large project. The only component that is not eligible is that long is the uh, the boiler plant replacement. Simply because we're replacing a similar. Capacity boiler. It's obviously a different type, and it's going to be more efficient and easier to control. Uh, but since it is not uh, in. Increasing the amount of capacity, um, it is not eligible under that large projects statute. So. That would be paid for under your regular revenue. Um, you can see that's four hundred forty-three thousand dollars. So the smaller amount to the two. For a grand total project of. Around eight point six million dollars. As we get into, again, recapping. Why this is something that you as a board uh, may want to consider at this time. We've talked about some of these things, but it does improve the reliability and. It reduces your risk. It's easier to maintain for your staff. As we've talked about in particular, I'll just highlight a steam boiler system. It's becoming more and more difficult to find people that can service those, especially in-house. Uh, so you oftentimes have to go. Outside to a, a company to, to find somebody to do that, and that's even getting more difficult. So uh, by, by switching to hot water, you're going to. It'd be easier for you to take care of that. So that's the reliability and. It's going to help with that uh, risk of mechanical failure. If you don't want to have a boiler system go down in the middle of January. It's going to help with the air quality. Uh, as you might recall from those study sessions. The current systems were designed at uh. Different levels. When you look at state code. So they, they aren't at to- today's levels, so they're about eighty-five percent or less of the today's fresher standards. So uh, this project would improve that. Uh, those. Those uh, improvements would, would bring it up to the hundred percent to today's code. Probably the most important is it's going to improve the learning environment, and we know that bringing fresh air in. If we were to bring fresh air into any, any space, we know that we perform better as human beings. So this uh, ultimately will improve the learning environment and lead to, it's studies have shown it lead to improved student performance. Finally, from a financial standpoint, Jeff will like this. It's, it's, it's advantageous to take advantage of very historically low interest rates right now. As we all know. Uh, this may not last too much longer as. Uh, inflation continues to uh, take hold. The Fed will likely increase those interest rates as a, as a countermeasure, so. It, this, this does a, have that opportunity to take advantage of those four interest rates. Finally. Uh, timeline. You can see here in December. There's a number of uh, actions. Uh, that we'd advise you to take, uh, take a look at. First would be a board approval of the revised tenure L T F M plan, which you will. I see on your board packet this evening. We'd advise, uh, and we would work with you, obviously cooperatively to order the equipment um, that has long lead times. We know a number of pieces of equipment for this project. Have nearly six-month lead times, so we want to move forward and, and develop some bid packages specific to that equipment. And then as it relates to um. Design work and implementation work approval of. Uh, a resolution allowing the administration to enter into professional service agreement with Site Logic as well. You can see in the January and through March timeframe. Uh, you would review and act on a bond sale. We'd work with you to solicit and accept bids from the contractors, and then we would advise you. Uh, and work with you on approving those contracts as well. And then finally, in the summer of twenty-twenty-two, so this coming summer. June through August, uh, we would work as construction managers to implement the project and have it up and running for the start of the school year. So with that, um, are there any questions related to any of the components that I, I shared with you?
And, and if I could just first comment on the, so the January action. Um, on the bad on bond sale, so that's that additional levy authority. Send it to the board, the rest of it. Take two and a half percent. Uh, interest rate on bond. And tax impact of about thirty-three dollars. Annual, or three dollars annually on a, on an average home. Huge gap of that. And if that is taken advantage of. So that would follow, we do this, that would follow um, in genuine.
Questions from board members? We did have over an hour with Site Logic just last week discussing the project, having a lot of our questions answered at that time, because we don't. Have a presentation and take action the same night, so we have had a lot of time to think about this and ask questions and have those sent in, so. Any other last minute questions before we look to entertain a motion? Go ahead, Paul.
Madam Chair, um. Matt, if you could, I think at the previous meeting, um. What caught my attention on this project and why it. At least in my mind, made a whole lot of sense. Was your presentation on. Uh, how we've far exceeded the useful life of the assets currently. Um, and you know, the annual expenses associated with that. Could you expand a little bit about that and also? Because I think we all need to be assured that this isn't a Band-Aid solution and. Also liked, and I don't know who, maybe who answered this question. Or make, you know, sinking a significant investment into O H. I think we need to, um, and perhaps that was in the facilities plan, but. We need to be assured that O H is in the long-term plans of the district. To keep as a school going forward. So if you could talk more about that, that'd be great.
Sure. In a nutshell, if, if O H Anderson is in the long-term plans for the district, it's a good investment, essentially. Paul, what you'll do is reset the clock on these major guts, the com- the mechanical components of the building. Obviously, there are other components, some educational pieces of the environment that can be done over time, and. I know that there's been some discussion as part of the larger plan to address those over time as part of this long-term facility maintenance plan, but also the master plan for the district. But in terms of those mechanical pieces, the air handling systems, the boilers, they're more than double. Beyond their useful life. So i- it is, is time to, to take a look at those and. And as you compare those systems to the other components in the district. It is the, it is the, the district, or this is the building that has the most need. Um, as you look specifically at the type of system, it is the only. Uh, building in the district that has steam, and it's the only. Uh, for, for a boiler system, and it's the only building in the district. That doesn't have full dehumidification. So uh, I don't know if I completely answer your question, but essentially. The components are more than double their useful life. The major mechanical components, it does reset the clock. You have really good bones in that particular building. There's an opportunity, um, if you think of it as Lego pieces, you're putting a lot of the Lego pieces together. And then you can construct around that as time goes on, and, and you can update the rest of the shell of the building and the rest of the, the educational components.
I'll make the motion to approve the revised L T M F N tenure plan for O H Anderson project.
Okay.
Any last discussion? Kevin.
This is a big, a big expenditure. And we on the board are. The fiscal stewards of the people's money. And uh, I take that charge very seriously. And so I will admit, at first I was. Hesitant. But I would say that after the presentation that you gave us a couple of times now. This idea of. Improving the life of O H Anderson for the next twenty years. And the kind of money that we're talking about. To do that with the rates, historic lows. I mean, it just really does make sense to me, and uh, um, I appreciate uh. Your presentation, Jeff, I appreciate your talking us through the bond sale, because that is really a very compelling thing to make this happen now, so. Uh, I'm in support.
We have a discussion. I think that it's just great for us all to appreciate the thoroughness of the work, and we're. I think that after hearing the presentation a couple more times. Feel more confident in, in making the decision. So. There were motion in a second on the floor to approve um, the O H Anderson project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Yep, your last item.
All right, one more item, so.
Approval of professional.
So relating to this last item we just did. Um, we would like to have the board. Um, give us the authority as superintendent to enter into a professional services agreement. Um, with Site Logic to complete this project, so.
So moved. Any discussion? All opposed in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Jeff, thank you for your work on this project.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Right, next on our agenda is approval of policies. Barb.
Um, so this is the final reading, or um, I'm bringing these all forward for approval. Um, we've seen these. Policies, uh, cut, at a couple meetings previously, and then these have also gone through the policy committee prior to that. And so uh, hearing no. Additional questions from the board, um, I put these on the agenda today for approval.
For approval of those two policies.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin. Second.
Thank you, Julie.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the policies. Any discussion? Okay, Paul.
Madam Chair, um. I apologize if I'm going to be, if I'm. Looking to perhaps slow the, slow this down a bit, but. Being new, um, and I haven't had the opportunity. I do have questions particularly on. Policy one oh two. Four thirteen, which I think we heard uh, the public speak to tonight. Five oh one and five twenty-four, and I would respectfully ask that. That if we could table those uh, particular policies until the next meeting, I'd love the chance to. Visit with um. The folks and talk more about these policies a little bit.
Hey, we have a motion second of floor. Are you making a motion to amend by pulling those off?
That is my motion, thank you.
So we have a, a motion to amend. And it's to pull off one oh two. Four thirteen. Five oh one. And five twenty-four.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second to amend the motion and. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Renee?
Nay.
So it's a two to three vote, the amendment fails. And so then we're back to the original motion of putting all the policies forward. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I wish, I guess I wish I had spoken. I thought. We could be courteous to somebody who hasn't been here on the previous meeting, so. I'll just express disappointment with that.
And Madam Chair, um, given the. The, the folks that were brave enough to speak here tonight uh, with such passion. Uh, I think we owe it to them, at least to spend a little bit more time reviewing the lead four thirteen, which is the harassment and violent policy. Again, I would plead that I have specific questions related to the other. Four policies and. I think it was mentioned in our previous meeting that. Policies are one of the most important things these boards do, and I'd love the opportunity to. At least have my questions addressed and answered regarding the policies that I mentioned. So I, I would ask the board reconsider. Um, my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. In Robert's rules, there's really not a way to do that. The board has spoken with a motion and vote on your amendment. I believe Barb definitely would be glad to meet with you on those policies, um, and they can come back through the policy committee. These aren't. Um, in stone forever. We have a process for policies to go through. That, and so I think you could talk to Barb about that, and then we, you could work with the chair to. Bring those back if needed through the policy committee process, if there's certain things we need to change in those. So I encourage you to meet with Barb on those policies. May I ask you, or do you have the questions?
Um, I do. I don't know if it's going to make sense to get into them.
Okay. Okay. Kevin.
I think um, also, you know, the, we've gone through these now and um. Uh, with the policy committee and, and uh, we've reviewed these. And I think there's uh, a, a part of the, that's policy, but then I think there's also a big piece that I think I heard tonight that's practice. So um, I think that that's a, an important part, and I. And I would like people to understand that I, we heard loud and clear, administration heard loud and clear, we are going to move to looking at these policies, which are model policies, policies from MSBA, and have had all the legal review and all that for all of the districts in the state of Minnesota. But what I'm hearing really is some practice things that we need to look at and, and refine and take action on. So that would be my opinion on this.
Any other discussion on the motion? So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve all the policies with the recommended changes presented in the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. That is 4-1. Next, we have the state safe routes to school program. Barb?
Thanks. And Kate, do you want to join me up here to just give some history a little bit? You'll fill in because you've been more recently. You've, since before I was here, we've been talking about safe routes to school and finding ways that we can work with our city and with county to create safer routes to school. A lot of our conversation has been around OH Anderson, but also, also to get to our middle school and high school. In particular, the area that we've talked quite a bit about, this to do with that neighborhood that is east of Hilton, west of Ideal, and south of, south of Stillwater Road, County Road 12. And so, Washington, see how I do here, okay? And then you jump in. So Washington County submitted a grant that, and it's not, sorry, in this picture, but I'll try to. Well, it's not in this picture. But Washington County submitted a grant and was awarded a grant to construct a path that goes from Ideal Avenue on the south side of County Road 12 to the traffic light at the entrance to the middle school and high school. And then students can cross there at that light safely. And so our part is looking at approving a new safe routes to school construction grant that Kate has been working on with community and Washington County. And so now I'm handing it to Kate to explain a little bit more.
Okay, so because that, the, want to give a little bit more information what Barb just spoke about for that Washington County piece, I believe that is slated for either 23 or 24. Do you remember one of, I think 24, but I'm not sure. So this is, right now, safe routes to school, there's quite a bit of money in their pot. And they had an infrastructure grant. The first part of that is we needed to submit a letter of intent. And that's what I did the end of October with our Safe Routes to School Committee.
And the Safe Routes to School Committee includes?
It includes a parent and PTO representative, Erin Roush, Bob Gobel from the city of Monamidi, Paul and Mary Hoff. They were, I believe, they oversee the Magi group as well as, they have, I think Paul has been a part of the Safe Routes to School Plan before. And then we also have Ian Harding, who is, represents like the Lakes Link right now. So we sat down, we talked about, you know, could we have, fill out this letter of intent in time to get to Mendat? We submitted at the end of October, on November 12th, we got a letter back, and I believe it was near Packet that said we passed that letter of intent. And so we needed to do A, B, and C in order to move forward with filling out the application for the January 10th deadline. What we're asking tonight is, would you be in support of us continuing that application process to construct this pathway into the middle school and high school campus?
This is where the light is on this map. This is the entrance that goes that way, the high school that way, the middle school. But you can't see here the pathway that's right along that walk. And we'd be able to cross here and meet up with sidewalk that exists currently.
And so that, and so the grant is to construct that walkway?
Right, correct. Would be for us, we need the support of the school board in order to continue the process for me and our committee to continue to work on the process of filling out the application for that.
So that actually connects to the bike lane that's there too. So I'm guessing it's fine for bikes to be on the sidewalk.
Correct. It's actually, obviously, we do it for safe routes to school to get kids to, to school safely. But it's also a plus because it's going to be an avenue for our community to be able to use our athletic fields, to get to our schools for any types of activities. So it's a win-win for school and community.
I would just say, I know kids ride their bikes to the tennis courts for different practices. And, and this, this serves that need as well.
Correct.
Questions?
Okay, I'm going to get up and point.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a crossing guard here now. That was what we were going to have when we first started doing this.
We, we have had a crossing guard, and it is not always staffed at this time because of staffing issues.
Two crossing points here. I mean, that's, that's, I'm worried about that.
And, and I will say right there, right now, it's a yield, and we would need to rethink the signage there. So it's a, I'll point again.
So here is a yield sign right here, and there's a stop sign over here. So I, I think we need to rethink that yield, but there would be, you know, stop signs.
So I understand.
So this was all the 2016 project, and this is the whole thing that was making my head explode about this, that just, and because everything was about student safety. So my concern is just another point of crossing in the morning with all those cars. So I mean, I, I totally support it. It's just messy. And so I don't, I don't know if there's another spot. I thought when we talked about this, that it was going to go out and to the, to the yellow lot, and that the kids were going to come in with all the other kids instead of coming in alongside the traffic and crossing the traffic. Because we had talked about that at one point.
And so I never saw the map. Sorry, we had talked about that at one point.
You point that out to me?
What's that?
Can you point me, can you point out where that?
Well, it's not really in the map.
Idea of that was?
Was, again, crossing further to the east and coming up this way.
That was one of the ideas that Washington County had had about.
Yeah. Yeah.
And one of the pieces of this is that we do, I am working with Washington County on this because they have to be the fiscal agent for us.
Okay.
And so they are aware of all of this. They have wrote a letter of support to work with us on that project.
So my question on the crosswalks, having, going through there myself, biking, it's, it can be a little interesting with cars. But what I'm wondering is those crosswalks that aren't always personed with a crossing guard, I'm wondering if we could make those solar-powered flashers so that the student pushes the button and then we get a flash. I guess the only thing would be how, how long does it flash? So the cars can kind of go through. But I'm just wondering about using flashers as a way to make it safer there for both of those.
From what I understand is the other grant that I'm writing by January 10th is a safer route to school planning. Our, our current plan is from 2015, and we realized that we need to update that. And it was mostly for OH Anderson is what I'm understanding. So now, as soon as this week, next week probably, because it's already Thursday, I will start working on that planning. And that could be a piece in there of that, we want to upgrade those areas for safer traffic for the students.
I mean, the thing that worries me is no one, no one has been hurt. But if someone were to get hurt, I'm guessing we would really move to, so, you know, the thought is maybe be proactive on this so no one does get hurt.
The other piece, which I totally agree, Kevin, right? We can't ever go backwards. We, we need to think of things in, in, ahead of time, right? So one of the other pieces, I just submitted a grant today. Also, I'm working on three different ones. So this is the third one. It's called the Boost Grant. And it is, again, I worked with the same committee to, it's an opportunity for us to buy equipment and materials to increase safe routes to school. And some of the things that we were ordering were some more sandwich boards, some light-up stop signs that flash. Some of those things that we could use possibly to enhance those crosswalks until we even can do more through our planning grant. Thank you.
Madam Chair, to Julie's point, we're, during the rush hours of drop-off and pickup, where are kids walking? What is their pattern today? I'm not familiar with their walk pattern.
So over here in the yellow lot. And so there are, so what we do is we can have the, sorry, there's the, yeah, so here it is. So there are north out of the high school here, which the kids will walk across. And then middle school and high school will walk at this mistletoe time. That is up along here to get to the yellow lot, some of them. And so that's how it is in the morning. So there's this crossing, but then the only other crossing is over close to the middle school and high school. Right? Can you picture the walkway that's between the middle school and high school? So kids are coming on their bike right now. I don't know if they're, I don't know how many kids actually are coming on their bikes because they would have to ride in here along the car. Or they might, I mean, so there are students that come in on their bikes. I can say I have seen kids come in on their bikes down here or up here, like they come through the St. Andrews Church and the lot, and then they come down this way. So I have seen that. I, I imagine if students are coming from over there riding along, they would come in earlier into the high school and middle school over here. But our issue right now, I will say, is this is, oh, there it goes. The issue that's been talked about quite a bit is right here. So we have, this is Hilton, and this is Ideal. And we have, we have quite a few students who live down in here. And they will come up through Ideal and then dart across traffic through here. And we, you know, we don't encourage, so all the students who are living down here, we have buses and we don't want them walking. But they are, they're middle school and high school students, so they do. And so they'll dart through here. And so the idea is to, to, you know, to kind of come down this way. And one of the reasons, now that I think about it, Julie, this was the, this was one of our conversations, but it once again put us in a situation where kids would get to here, and then they wouldn't want to go all the way over here and come back. And so that was part of the reason.
I, I still, I'm going to place my bets on how many kids are still going to dart straight across because I don't want to go this way. But I don't, I mean, it just feels like, it feels like 50/50, you know what I mean? And I, when we first did it, Washington County was adamant that it had to be at Hilton. Right. And so that's how we designed it. And so it's just been a debate ever since we finished. So.
And they do have in their plans a path that goes over to Hilton. So for students who want to go back, back and to Hilton and then back over, that is in the plan as well.
I did it, but if you keep thinking about that extra crossing at all costs, Kevin, it was painful, wasn't it? It was a painful, long conversation. And, and I, you know, that just, it breaks my heart because it's one more area that makes it unsafe. And watching the pictures, as we all did, Stacy, you were probably there. Were you there too? Or were, yeah. It's frightening what happens on that driveway in the morning. So, and so I appreciate your work. I just, I, I don't like the idea of one more crossing in there. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know what to do to fix it, though.
It's so, will there be a, a place to put, to park their bikes?
Is that? That's part of the Boost Grant is, I've ordered more bike racks and things.
I'm just thinking, if it is more aligned with that sidewalk, then that gives them more incentive to park, you know, to take their bike up that way if they're going, if it's leading them straight to where they're parking their bike.
Just wondering if there'd be some, if, if we're, I mean, part of the problem is Washington County dictates where we can put stuff on the county road. And, but I'm just wondering if we looked at the ideal piece of going right straight across to the west parking lot? Is there a name for that one?
The Blue Lot.
The Blue Lot, thank you. But if there were some actual landscaping that might make it so that it's a little bit more cumbersome, because it's all about how students, they, they will dart and do whatever they can across without worrying about safety. They just, that's, so it is. And so is there, are there some modifications that we could do to the landscaping there that would send them to go to where the new sidewalk is proposed to go?
I think, I might be wrong, but I feel like we're getting on two different conversations here. Like, some of those things are important things, but I think they're going to be pieces that I would put in my planning grant. This infrastructure piece is, is essentially the, the working with the county on where are they going to put it? And then can we get this added sidewalk in there? I think our intention as a Safe Route to School Committee, when we talked about, could we even, we had one week to get the letter of intent out. And was that this is an opportunity for us to get some state dollars to pay for this construction of a partial safe route to school area, right? It, does it sound like, and again, I apologize, I don't know all the history of the conversations that have happened, and it appears that I need to learn a little bit more about that too. But I think some of the suggestions that have been made could be pieces that we could put in our planning or utilize some of my Boost Grant money, cross our fingers that we, we receive those dollars, that we could do some proactive safety pieces for those crosswalk years. Because I agree, Julie, that was something that was alarming to me when I was talking with Barb. Well, do they cross here? What about if we were on this side and no, we have to be on this? You know, there's just, there's lots of questions. So it's just an opportunity for us to try. Again, we're not guaranteed that we'd be awarded these dollars. But if we could have the capability of the state to help us financially afford this partial safe route to school, we'd love the opportunity.
Kate, if we put in for the grant and then we, I don't know, alter our plan slightly, is that an issue? Do you know what the grant, I mean, like, how, how much do we have to stick exactly to our plan? Or can we tweak it?
From what I'm hearing is that you could make modifications that you're, that you discuss. I think what they're saying is you're going to do something, and this is the chunk of money you have. It has to be, we can't just all of a sudden say, nope, we're going to put it over across Hilton. We, we couldn't do that. Our letter of intent would have needed to state that piece.
So it's that it's a, with, you know, like, if it's the access to the middle school and high school at that.
At that intersection, I believe we, we have the ability to do that modifications, is what I'm hearing.
And so we could take this forward, your, your concerns that you had from previous conversations and see what we could do to address it in, in the plan. Okay, and then, and this is something that if we get the grant, it will still come back to the board with all the design.
Yes, there'll be discussions because there's bids, there's all of that, correct.
So we're asking for, is for Kate and the Safe Routes to School team to be able to submit the grant.
I make that motion.
Thank you, Kevin. And the motion to approve the commission of the grant?
By Kevin, seconded by Stacy. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks for all of your work. I know it's not easy.
Our last action item tonight is approval of donations and grants from October 2021, totaling nine hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Stacy.
By Julie, second by Stacy to approve the grants. Any discussion? I'd like to thank all the donors. The grants are greatly appreciated. The use of the funds will be used for the mission of the school district and used towards the wishes of the donor. All those in favor of accepting the grants and donations, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have school board committee reports. I know we have a long list tonight and it's already all about after nine, so keep that in mind as you're giving your reports. We're gonna start with AMST. We've had a couple things with the AMST. We had the AMST conference and we had a board meeting just last week. So why don't we start with the conference because that was first.
I think Tolu had, did you have something you were going to report?
I'd like Tolu to report. Yeah, it was a really, really great conference and I'll keep it short and sweet so that we can wrap up here. Um, but just to start, it really showed me how appreciative I should be of other school districts doing this kind of work and the opportunities Montomeda has to collaborate with them. I mean, I got, I'm gonna highlight on one specific breakout session that I think we all talked about and really loved. But St. Louis Park, they essentially employed their students to do a research project for their school answering a question. And one of the question, the question that the students presented was why students of color aren't in advanced classes, which I think we can kind of see some some similarities here at Montomeda. And and essentially, they spent the summer talking to students, listening to students, making sure they could get the stories behind the statistics and not just the numbers of MCA, ACT, SAT. Um, and uh, yeah, they just focus on the stories and it was really interesting to see how their voices were amplified in that situation. And I really do think that Montomeda has that resource and that power to implement something similar where it goes into research. I'm on the maps team. We spend all year studying one protein and its complex stories and we're doing research that some students get to do in undergraduate graduate school kind of thing. So it's not like we don't have the students who have the intellectual abilities or we don't possibly have the teachers who could help facilitate this kind of environment. It's just we have to figure out how we use those resources to figure out questions that are affecting our students in this exact light. Um, so I'll just talk about that one. That one was really, really cool. I really loved listening because some of the students came and they talked about their project. And I was like, well, I would love to do something like that. Um, and I know there are students that are school too that'd be very interested in working on their skills of research, but then also studying something that kind of interests them and in and allows them to see the world in a different way. So.
Julie, what's the last meeting? So I went to AMST last week and there was a great, powerful presentation by Dr. Yuh Yuhuru Williams from the University of St. Thomas and Lucy introduced him. He is a founding member of the Racial Justice Initiative at the University of St. Thomas and he is history and social studies professor as well. He gave a presentation basically as cheerleading the the great work that is being done on Reimagine Minnesota, basically cheerleading cheerleading the work that's being done through MSD and districts throughout the state. They also adopted their legislative platform, if anyone wants to have a look at it, similar to some similar ideas as MSBA. I like it how they're all starting to align themselves really addressing special ed cross subsidy, increasing the safe schools levy and looking to stabilize education funding. There are three position papers on charter schools, board referendum, renewal and vouchers that are, if anyone's more interested in those details, they're on the website. So that's really what it was unless there's more you think I should add.
Okay. Kevin, go ahead.
I just wanted to echo Tulu said about the conference. I thought it was wonderful and I thought it was really wonderful to have you along. And I was, what is, you know, a small bro- breakout group with, I think it was Fridley. And we were just talking about how great this particular breakout session was. And and then we had to get into small group and kind of just talk about what we were doing in our own districts. We talked about how compelling the St. Louis Park one was. And and they said, well, you know, we have a school board rep. I said, well, we do too. And our school board rep is here. And they were just amazed that, you know, we would, I don't know if there were any other school board reps there, but people were amazed that two of you, you did Montomeda proud. So thank you.
Oh, I want to add one more thing. The legislative preview is January 7th and AMST would like an RSVP if you plan to be there as they're trying to figure out how many chairs to set up. So if you plan to go, please let them know. And one other thing I forgot is that they are currently accepting comments on the social studies standards right now. So now is your time. If you are concerned, it is open until sometime in if you look on their website, you'll see it. What does it say? Through uh, January fourteenth. And this is an eighteen to two-year process, eighteen months to two-year process, but. Yeah.
Right. Um, next we have Maeve. I attended the Maeve meeting. Right now, the fall fund drive is going on. We try every year to have a hundred percent participation by board members. If you can donate any amount to help Maeve, that would be great. It allows Maeve to tell other donors and corporations that the school board supports them a hundred percent. They don't look at the dollar amount we we give, but the fact that we are supporting them with some contribution. Barb shared an update on health and wellness that she had shared with the full board here. They've hired a new accountant. They're doing their board retreat in December and they're gonna do some work with looking forward and looking back. And then they're in the process of legacy night fun, legacy night planning. So they've got some committees and things ready for that event. Uh, the next one is the School Board Association Legislative Update. The delegate assembly was Friday night and Saturday. Kevin and I are both delegates. So Barb did share out the resolutions and the votes somewhat passed, somewhat failed. We did have two resolutions up, the flexible, the flexibility, I'm not, I guess I call it the flexibility resolution passed quite well. I think there were two people opposed to it. Everyone else was in favor, which is great. And the purpose of the second resolution was to get awareness and conversation started around the issues with sports and when sports are offered during the academic day at some, some charter schools and others in the high school league. It didn't exactly as intended. So thank you, Julie, for all your work to put that together. It was a really good conversation. They did have to call the question because it was such an intense conversation. That one did fail, though, but it was a very split vote. One of the most split votes I've seen, but it did fail. But I think it did raise a lot of awareness as we're hoping it would. And we sort of put a big plug in to now have board members approach the high school league to have that conversation there. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, it was an interesting delegate assembly. I never know when you have those ones where there's like one or two people that are knows whether they're actually paying attention to the thing that pops up on the screen. But anyway, Julie, I again, I applaud you for bringing that one forward. It didn't, it didn't pass in the traditional way, but um, in its failing, it actually won. And that message was carried, I think it was, it was one of these things that most people probably didn't realize is an emerging issue. And it was great to be able to highlight that to all the delegates across the state of Minnesota. So thank you for giving us a little background thing too on that before we went up, so.
Uh, MSBA coffee and conversations is tomorrow morning. You should have that invite in your email. It's a Zoom link. And then leadership conference, we've talked quite a bit about coming up in January. So nine sixteen board.
Nine sixteen, as I alluded to earlier in our first meeting, we are looking at only about five of the existing board members who each come from one of the member districts. Only five of the thirteen will come back through changes on their own boards or just not being on the board, they're a home board anymore. So big changes coming there. We had an emergency or a special meeting at four thirty today because we wanted to re- look at the calendar and align it more towards the thirteen member districts for the holidays. And it was dip and duck to get a quorum, but we finally did. And then I had got out of there at five fifty and had a boogie woogie here. So things are going well at nine sixteen. Thank you.
I know Julie's got two additional reports. She has facilities committee and the curriculum committee and then Stacy has two reports after that.
Barb is looking at my papers, glossing over. I'm not gonna read it all.
I like.
Yes, um, yes, um, our facilities meeting was the site logic stuff. And again, we're committing to the long term health of O H Anderson. O H Anderson is a good, stable, solid building and will be useful for possibly forty plus years. I know there was one thing I want to say, just one second. We, this has been on our, on our radar for years, started like Kevin said, back in two thousand eight and has just been brought up again within the last five years. So it's a logical progression on the on the adding the new boiler in the cooling system, so. Yes, Monday, December sixth, the curriculum advisory, I filled in for for Kelly. Stacy was there as well. It was a great meeting. Two new courses will be offered at the high school next year. One personal finance course offered in social studies presentation by Emily Osborne. And the other class will be an electronics two robotics, automation and mechatronics. A presentation given by Dan Kazar. The committee was excited to hear about the new classes and offered some feedback to the presenters for ideas. Also touched briefly on secondary schedule and the group expressed support for more career exploration and community partnerships with classes for the high schools.
Thank you. Stacy has PTO and gifted.
Yes, so both of those met on November seventeenth. We'll talk about the gifted and talented advisory committee. Laura shared in detail the enrichment opportunities that are provided at each building this year. There, then there was a lot of discussion and breakout groups. The consensus is that math is a strong program throughout the district. English and science are growth areas, really need to start to identify ways to ensure that every student's being appropriately challenged. There was also a discussion of social emotional learning, specifically emotional dimensions of giftedness and just that, just also ensuring that we have a larger community at large and teachers and administration and parents and everyone has a better understanding of GT students and how to work with them. It was a really good meeting. And PTO, that was also on the seventeenth. They did intensive review of their book fair. I think there, there, there may have been some issues or something. So there was a lot of discussion on that. Um, on how they want to improve it going forward, but they did contribute over a thousand books, it sounds like, for all the elementary libraries and teachers' library, the teachers in class libraries. There's a plan for strategy games to come back in the new year. This is very well attended in years past. So that's exciting that it it kind of was on a hiatus during COVID. So I think they're figuring out ways to make that happen. There was also discussion for the Missoula Children's Theater, which is going to be January fourth through eighth. It sounds like that there's an audition coming up and applications are due next Monday. So if students are interested in that, PTO is looking for volunteers to join their committee as well as to fill positions. I think they've got some openings that they need to do. And the meeting on, the next meeting was rescheduled from the fifteenth to the twenty-first. So if anyone's planning to attend. I can. Yes, thank you. Yes, I was looking at my calendar to make sure.
So what is the Missoula play? Do you know?
Oh, um. Oh, it's PTO. It's Snow Queen.
No Queen, okay.
Isn't that a Jan Brett book? Or am I thinking?
I don't know, whatever it is, they always do some twist. So it doesn't seem like the same.
Okay. Any other committee or reports from board members? Well, it's been a full night. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Ab moved.
Kevin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.